Good morning. It is Monday, October 2nd, 2023 at 10:00 a.m., and this is City of Montrose City Council Work Session. And at these work sessions, this is a time for City Council to go over future items that we will be voting on and talk to staff. This is usually the first time an idea is presented formally to council for our discussion. We do not have public comment at these meetings, but every item we vote on at a city council meeting does have public comment, and all of us are available to be reached by citizens who have any concerns, if they hear anything during a work session they want to talk to us about. That being said, we get right down to business. So our first item this morning is Sanitary Sewer Master Plan CIP III Design Contract Award, and I'll turn this over to City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our next big sewer trunk line project. If you remember, over the last decade or so, when the master plan first completed, it was the airport trunk sewer was kind of the big one, and then we went down Sunnyside and up Mesa to kind of get the trunk system up to where it needs to be to stay ahead of growth and get basins routed in the right, in the proper locations, and take pressure off where we didn't want it and things of that sort. This is the next big one of those. So in 2000, I think 2009 were the original master plans, and we updated them about five or six years later, just to make sure that recalibrate the flows and figure out where everything's going and how the new system was working, and from that, create a new capital prioritization plan. And that's what you're looking at here. So within that, the first big product that came out of the updated master plan was the Hillcrest Sewer Line, which was done with the South Hillcrest Sewer Extension. There was some cleanup to be done at Niagara and Hillcrest intersection, which is going to be done with the roundabout project here soon. And then this is CIP III is the one you're looking at outlined in right here as the next big kind of trunk line project to, it's kind of the next bottleneck in the system of sorts. And so we're working on just design at this point. So what we need to do along this basin and what it drains is identify which areas are currently sufficient, which ones are either not or will not be within, you know, the planning horizon, so we can identify when those bottlenecks would hit, and then obviously make plans to, you know, if they need to be built within the next five years or 10 years or 20 years, make sure that that's built into the capital plan to know what needs to be upgraded and when. So we're looking to, yeah, do all the survey necessary to, you know, fine tune the line, location, sizes, alignments, capacities, look at build outs of the basin. This one is influenced by a lot of the buildout pressures we are seeing kind of east of town. So if you can see my cursor there, kind of as you go northeast there, we are seeing quite a bit of development interest in that area. We don't want to get into a situation where capacity several miles downstream from where they're proposing is, is, becomes a limiting factor in growth of our cities. These are kind of city trunk system improvements. They're typically not subdivision level improvements. So for that design work, we've broken into two phases. So this first phase would be all the work necessary to understand what and where and when, and then once we know that, then we can actually put a scope together for the detailed design. So we're only authorizing the first half now, which gets us up to picking an alignment and identifying which areas need to be improved, and then at that point, we would come back for a change order to do and authorize the actual design of those improvements. We went out for an RFP, got pretty good interest, surprised. Well, I don't know why sewers so excited. I think roundabouts are more exciting than sewer trunk project, but, but we were pleased, had a lot to choose from, so ran through all the proposals. This was a qualifications rating proposal. We have had sewer projects go sour in the past due to inaccuracies in survey or inaccuracies in design and groundwork that have cost us, or could have cost us quite a bit if not caught. So we really want to make sure we have the best qualified team. It's, if, in sewer work, if you get, if you're off a couple inches, it can, or if you miss a major utility that's in conflict, you go out to construction and the implications can be in the millions. So we want to make sure we have a really solid team working on it. We did get, yeah, again, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven proposals. We rated them collectively between the engineering and utility department. The highest rated consultant was Delmont out of town here, and we're joined by David Shield. Very fortunate to have them in town. They're, they're as good as any of them in here, right here in Montrose. So when they do propose on these projects, they're generally pretty competitive. Once we got through the rating, we then went into negotiations on price. Their pricing came back lower than what we would thought it would be, and with that, we're comfortable making a contract recommendation for the 124-200. And again, this is for that first phase to get all the initial work done. We did have budgeted, I think in 2024, we had 250 to go towards both phases, one and two. The reason we're starting this now is we had some other sewer projects that we're supposed to start hitting this fall that didn't, so this kind of created an opening both time-wise and, and funding-wise, so we'll spend a little bit of that in 2023, but the bulk of that'll be in 2024, so that should leave plenty within the budget in both years' budgets to handle these expenditures, and work will kind of take place through third quarter next summer so that when we go into budget season, we'll know if we need, if there are immediate construction projects that need to happen, we'll have those numbers going into budget season to start with the first chunks of construction possibly as early as 2025.
So if I understand this correctly...
Make sure you're talking into the mic and that it's on.
Yes, ma'am. If I understand this correctly, the award would be for Phase One and Phase Two, only Phase Two would, the, the cost would be determined later, and you would, as you say, have a change order, but this award would be for both phases?
Yeah, essentially, as long as everything goes well, we can, I mean, like the way our contracts are written, if something's not performing or something, we could change. But generally, yeah, that they would do the whole project, we just haven't scoped Phase Two yet, so that would come back before council as a change order when that pricing is, is in scope. Initially, we're trying to price all of it, but it was just so ambiguous, they'd have to make it unnecessarily large just to make sure, and we have plenty of time, so the thought was let's just price what we know is in focus now and then, and come back once the rest comes in focus. Yeah, great point.
Any other questions from council on this?
Just for clarification, that there are, some of the expenses will be made this fall if it's available, if, if the contract availability is there?
Yeah, they should be able to get started on some of the initial survey before it gets too cold, so yes, probably of that, you know, 124, probably less than a third of that or so would be expended in 2023, as long as that availability holds. If not, you know, it'd go into 2024. So we're covered either way, the way the buddies are sitting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But keep your mic on, because you're next for the Otter Pond Dam Utility Relocation Expense Authorization.
Thank you. So this, we talked about at work session a few months ago, kind of knowing that it was coming, but not necessarily when. Things have kind of come together on the project, and I'll give a quick rundown of the overall project. So, and we're joined here by Christie with their HOA board. Thanks for joining. So if you have any questions of the HOA, she'd be a good resource. So Otter Pond, Otter Pond Dam story, I'll give the quick Reader's Digest version. Otter Pond Dam is a private embankment and pond owned by the Otter Pond HOA. It was built in the 90s, I believe, late 90s, and as you can see, it was pretty far from town at that point. Here's an overview of how that laid at the time relative to the rest of town. And, you know, the city then, you know, kind of built and kind of kept getting closer to it. At the time, it was never permitted with the state for unknown reason as an embankment, probably because it was so distant from the town, nobody really thought much of it, but in the, I'm getting all my timelines mixed up, I think it was about a year ago, they came to the city saying, hey, you know, we're seeing some covert failures in the road. Upon further inspection, the outlet works of that pond was failing to the point that it was causing a bunch of soil loss, to the point that the road was kind of caving in. They rightfully reached out to the state as well. Division of Water Resources has a regulation over impoundments such as these. The state looked at it and said, yep, that's a serious problem. We need to draw down the reservoir, and this is, will classify as a significant hazard dam under the state regulations, and so it will need to be repaired according to state regulations on dams, which is, which is a good thing. You think about, you know, back when it was built, probably less consequential, but now with the rec center and all the neighborhoods immediately downstream of there, having that higher level of care for the construction of the replacement to make sure, sure this thing has a, you know, 100-year life like dams should, is a good thing. Keeps us, keeps, good for them, good for us, you know, all of the above. And so the state came in, and it's been working with them to design a replacement of the, the dam's outlet works. So the pond goes up to what is Otter Pond Circle, which is the road, and the road kind of embankment creates the dam. They initially had just two covert pipes going through it. That'll all be rebuilt and replaced to a modern standard with, you know, properly-sized outlet control, fully controllable. Right now, it's just a free overspill kind of thing. And, yeah, essentially rehab, rebuild the entire dam, not too different than what we did to Sero, just a lot smaller scale. The dam is only 12 feet taller, so. So as the city in here, we have water and sewer utilities that run through the, parallel that embankment. What we don't want as a city is those to sit within what is now a jurisdictional dam with the state for multiple reasons. The biggest is if we ever need to dig those up for any reason, we're now digging through a dam, which then requires that the pond has to be drained on an emergency basis, which the neighborhood wouldn't like, but also we, we don't want a simple sewer repair to turn into a, you know, million-dollar deal by the time you dig it up and replace it. Fortunately, the HOA owns the tract immediately north of there, which does give us room, and the geometries and the grades work out that we can relocate the sewer outside of the embankment and the water line. Kind of harder to see here, but we can, yeah, reconstruct these concurrent with that project so that when the dam is done, it no longer has our water and sewer utilities inside of it. So if there's an issue in the future, we're not triggering all those problems that come with that being inside of a dam. From a dam safety standpoint also, you know, having a pressure pipeline within an embankment is also a less desirable thing if you have a leak in that line that could compromise the, or a road, and it just creates risk for the overall system. So we've been working with the state and their designer on the design of these relocations. We did a lot of the legwork on the design, and we're folding it into their designers' plans. By, the way the state's regulations work, the whole product has to be under a single design engineer, under their single stamp and their single certification, so you practically end up with a single contract for the dam replacement and any of its associated work. And so like sometimes where we might run this as a separate project to get out of the way ahead of theirs, they're all one. You gotta, you know, there's a portion of the work you have to drain the dam for. They are going to get started on a lot of their outlet work replacements kind of concurrent at the same time. You don't want contractors on top of each other. So the way we've set this up is when they went to bid with their project, we just asked them to put the water and sewer lines on their own so that when the contractor bid that work, we know what the costs are associated with those replacements and what the costs are associated with the dam itself. So again, the dam is a private dam being paid for by the HOA, its outlet works replacement, and the associated, like, street repairs above it are all being paid for as part of the HOA's project with their contractor, and then we would pay for the utility relocation work, since there are utilities and it's in our advantage to get them out of there, and the associated street repairs on top of that. So because there's portions of this, everything outside of their outlet works replacement, if it weren't for the utility work, you know, those portions of the street wouldn't need to be patched. So as is typical of utility projects, we would patch the street with those. All that said, they did an invitation for bids through their designer and contracting pool. You can see the overall projects came in at 996,000 or 1.6 million, pretty large spread, not too terribly surprising on specialized work such as dam work. It's a pretty niche contract, or, yeah, type of work. I will say that Mountain Valley Contracting was the same contractor that did Sero, so they are vetted, and, you know, they did a, they did a good job for us on Sero. But again, in this case, they would be contracting directly with the HOA, you know, for the, the overall project, and we would be paying, what we're saying here is 369,119 for our portions as reimbursements to that contractor. I think I'd call it 370,000 just for even numbers. And then that work is scheduled to hit, and our start as soon as possible, they obviously want to get it done so they can start refilling as soon as the water becomes available in the spring. And so some of those expenditures, I think the contractor said at least 50% are likely to hit in 2023, which would just use reserve within water and sewer capital funds. Again, those are both, have the available reserve with the other projects that either pushed out or didn't happen in 2023, and then we have some of those expenditures, I think those, all of those expenditures in 2024 as well, just because, being honest, contractors always say, I'm going to get started before the end of the year, and then they, something comes up and they don't, and so it's no harm to just budget, and, and if we do 2023, have expenditures in 2023, that'll be done with reserves. If they do it all in 2024, we have the budget available there to do it in 2024 as well, depending on, getting that, that split between 23 and 24 is always a, always a guess with contractors. But, you know, and the other piece of that, too, is the state is still reviewing the replacement plans, and so until those get approved by the state, they can't start anyway. And so if, for whatever reason, that were to get delayed, we just want to make sure we're not having to scramble in 2024 to make sure that we have the money allocated, so. I think that's a story in a nutshell. Any questions, anything I missed? See a thumbs up from the HOA.
One of the things that we had mentioned when we had seen this before was that the relocation utility lines will be outside of the immediate spillway area, so that if there is some overflow, some rain event or something, that even if there is a bad vent, that we are still in a great place because of the design, put that outside of that spillway area.
Hundred percent. Yep. Yeah, much more protected in this setup.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thanks, Scott. Stay on the mic, because, next up, Uncompadre Riverway Trail Landscaping Improvement Expense Authorization.
Okay, let me get you another picture here. So within Colorado Outdoors, Montrose Urban Renewal Authority, we built the Connect Trail. We call it the Connect Trail because it was under the GOCO's Connect Initiative. It's technically our uncompagory riverway trail. So the reach we're looking at here is, you know, going north from the West Main Trailhead north into Colorado Outdoors. Eventually, we, you know, plan to go to Tavawatch. When we put this trail in, which you can see in this aerial here, so just to kind of help everybody get their bearings, this is Young Compagory River at the bottom of the screen, the Mayfly Pond area, and then Shelter Distilling, which is under construction right now, along Mayfly Drive here. So when we put that trail in, we did some master planning for what the rivers, well, I guess when we did all of Colorado Outdoors, we did master planning to see what the development's going to look like overall footprint, what the trails is, what the river's going to do, how they're all going to interact and interface with each other. You know, with that, the envision was kind of a riverway, river walkway type experience, which you see in a lot of cities like Pagosa has it, where, you know, you kind of have this public space that's an interface between the river and the, and the private amenities that's a nice, they complement each other. It's a nice walkway. People usually come out of restaurants and will hang out there and things of that sort. So that was the envision for this trail because you have unique commercial development on the backside and the river on the, on the front side, which has, is in the ownership of the property through dedications from the developers out here, and, and, yeah, just creating that a public amenity space through there. But it didn't make sense to do it at the time, so we didn't want to invest a bunch of money in landscaping and boulders and places for people to hang out when there wasn't commercial development yet. And so the idea was to wait, and as these commercial developments come online, kind of piece by piece, build that frontage. What that does is allows you to make sure that it, it obviously matches their landscaping, but works with their, you know, exit points of where people are likely to congregate on their site, and just to make sure that it all meshes well and will get used. And so we're at that stage here. So what you have on this figure here is Shelter Distilling. You know, they plan, their main building is, is here, they plan a patio area on their rear, which will have, you know, lawn games, obviously seating, service area. They do have, plan to have smaller scale concerts on their back patio and things of that sort. So you kind of got a great amenity that'll be built here, and they're building that, so that's part of their site landscaping and their site development. And then you have the trail, and that's where you cross over onto the public property is on that, this kind of red line here is the boundary between their property and then what is the city, this, the trail is on the city's property. And then we look to kind of complement that with a seating area here that would have just kind of trail mix type material, boulders, some benches, and then connections down to the river. So another piece you get is rafters that, you know, may want to come up for a sandwich or what have you on their way through, so to kind of promote the river. Have a hitching post here and a place they can tie off, not a formal boat launch put-in or anything, but just a, kind of an informal rest area, and then connect their trails so people can get down to, you know, view the river, fish, do the boat thing, you know, all of those various things. And then, yeah, rock to land match, kind of the river bottom park style, water sports park style, you know, kind of tiered seating areas and sandstone boulders and things of that sort. So that's the kind of work that's envisioned in here. We were, this was all going to be a 2024 project. As their sites coming together, they've hired a landscaper to design and do, finish their landscaping, and they have an opening to get started on it this fall, because they're looking to open next summer-ish, and so to kind of make sure that we stay ahead of that schedule, we were looking to get the expense authorization complete now, just in case that opportunity holds and they are able to get started on some of that work, we could expend some of that in 2023. So what we are looking to authorize is $100,000 in expenditures. This, we're setting these up as reimbursements because they already have a landscaping contractor and designer, which are, they're about as big of a unicorn these days as, as concrete contractors. We're excited that they were, are doing this project and are willing to help because they've been hard to find, and to get, to respond and answer their phone. So we would like to set this up just as a reimbursement. So similarly, as that work is done, as it's completed, we would get, they would do pay apps as they go along the way, and we would reimburse for the work that's completed instead of contracting with them directly. So that's why this is set up as a reimbursement instead of a contract, but...
Just as an aside, we were out on the trail yesterday. It's starting to look like a real building.
Yeah, that one, part goes together real quick. Yeah, yep. Great. So in the contractor, they're talking to is SE Ward's. I think he kept it generic at this point, just because they're just starting, but whoever, it's, because sometimes they have multiple tiers of subs or something, too, so kept it generic that whoever's doing that landscaping work would be the one that's being reimbursed, so.
Thank you.
So we have, there at North Ninth, there's sort of an informal trail access on that section. Would it make sense for us to investigate what it would take to do the, kind of the landscaping and stuff all the way down to that area where that, that trail put-in is?
Yeah, so the, we've considered that, looking at this figure here, so this is still one more lot, and then this area will, that area will kind of get redeveloped as the wholesale formal trailhead with likely a boat put in, a more formal boat put in, but the locations of that are generic. So we set all those up to kind of be flexible that as, as they're developed, they, it can move around to kind of integrate with however that sets up. And so I would be hesitant to go further south just because you have two more developments that are still going to occur there, and to do them at the same time as those, so that it's kind of the same reasons, that they kind of mash and mesh, mesh, and, you know, like this is a good, you know, where these two trails come off, these kind of match where their trails come down off of their site, things of that sort, so that it, it's hard to guess where those would actually be, where this is still under development here, because there's still two lots left, if that makes sense. And so for that reason, we kind of kicked that can down the road.
Okay, so rather than trying to develop it now, we're going to wait, make sure it matches and all, like you were saying.
Yep.
So it makes sense?
Yep.
Isn't that Marada someplace over there also?
Yep, so it's, I mean, a little off the screen here, probably about right here. Yeah, so an update on that, that's kind of a separate standalone product that was budgeted for the development of that next year. We've got the plaits completed and have been passed off to the owners for the, to secure the land itself, and so, yeah, that's, that's running on its own path independent of this, but it is underway, and we've had good movement on that lately.
So they're going to purchase the land?
Yep, 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 so that's all still in the works, yeah, yep.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thanks for everything this morning, Scott.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item up for discussion is the proposed changes to 6-1-21 regarding unreasonable noise. Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro.
Morning. I'm here on a proposal to change our six-part unreasonable noise ordinance, one piece of it in particular. This is a discreet change as proposed to subsection D. The substantive ordinance violation is an A, and that would not be changed by this particular proposal. A clean version appears on pages 14 through 16 of your packet. Red lines on 17 through 19, I'm going to spend most of my comments on page 17, which is a red line. As it stands now, in order to prove this ordinance 6121A in court, the prosecution will have to prove beyond reasonable doubt the following elements: that the defendant, or that person's name may be, in the city of Montrose, county of Montrose, state of Colorado, at or about the date and place charged unlawfully, made, caused to be made or continued, or allowed any unreasonable noise, which, element five, unreasonably noise injures or endangers the comfort, health, peace, or safety of others. The proposal that we're trying that is before you would change subsection D, which is a prima facie evidence. It's a presumptive or evidentiary presumption, and I'll explain what that means a little bit, but let me go back a step. Our ordinance, our unreasonable noise ordinance is an example of a qualitative type of noise ordinance. It's not tied to a particular decibel level, nor is this particular ordinance tied to a time of day. Our authorization to do this, municipal powers are enumerated in 311541, and noise regulation is one of the listed general police powers that municipalities may exercise. The statute allows a governing body municipalities the power to, quote, "to prevent and suppress riots, routs, affrays, noises, disturbances, and disorderly assemblies in any public or private place." That's 3115411E. So we have an express statutory grant of authority to engage in kind of rulemaking ordinance regulation in this form. What the proposal would purport to do would be to change the prima facie evidence piece to make this broader. Right now in D, it reads, "if sound broadcasts from speakers or similar equipment from a motor vehicle." Similar equipment would seemingly modify speakers, it would realize or respond to the sound system of the vehicle. This proposal would purport to, if adopted, be, strikes the word similar and replaces with emitted from any equipment, the intent of which is to make this broader, in broader an application to beyond the sound system for motor vehicles to other fixtures and features of a vehicle, whether that's installed, whether it's aftermarket, whether it came installed originally from the factory. The seconds, the, the sentence added here at the very bottom of the red line is immaterial for the purposes of this provision whether the equipment emitting the sound was originally installed in the vehicle, installed subsequently, modified subsequently, or is emitting sound due to damage or defect. In other words, it's a fairly broad application or evidentiary presumption that would arise in this circumstance and could arise from a variety of equipment, not just related to the sound system. I said this as a prima facie evidence. What does that mean? So basically what that means is if these conditions are met by proof that the state or the city brings on, the court can take it as an permissive evidentiary presumption sounds unreasonable. There's no such thing as a mandatory presumption other than the presumption of innocence in any criminal trial or in any municipal ordinance trial violates the Constitution otherwise. So it's a permissive presumption that can be rebutted. That said, how this really works is if the city presents some evidence in support of this, and if these ten circumstances are met, in a jury trial, the jury's instructed with an evidentiary instruction that says that you can take this into account as the sound is unreasonable, and in the court trial, the court can do something similar to that. So that's what that is in a nutshell. We're not legislating a part and vacuum in this with vehicles. There's another provision in our code 6123 that deals with sound vehicles. I'll just read it because it's very short. "It shall be unlawful to operate sound amplification equipment from a motor vehicle to broadcast sound outside of such vehicle between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. or in any area where it's audible from a hospital or nursing home." That's in our code now. So arguably, D is somewhat, it's an evidentiary presumption, but the crime has been covered in two different spots. The intent of this is to, again... The intent of this is to, again, broaden this to be beyond the sound system, to allow this problem to be dealt with by officers more generally for equipment, any equipment giving rise to unreasonable noise. This change is in part brought to you from citizen input from a recent interactive session. I'll try and be responsive as a part to that, to those concerns brought up in that session. And with that, I'll take your questions.
I do have a question.
Make sure you took into the mic so it can be heard.
Okay, I'm in the microphone. So we're maintaining the qualitative test as opposed to the quantitative test in this particular ordinance. And I guess my question is really, and maybe Tim might want to weigh in on this also, by due quality of nature, we have a broader ordinance, if you will, in terms of violations, like instance, every citizen can report a violation because they, they hear it, as opposed to quantitative, where it would actually require an officer reading a decibel meter or something like that to, to actually charge a person with a violation. Correct?
That's right.
So we did, did we give some thought both as to the qualitative and quantitative, and we decided, because this does have a broader reach as a qualitative ordinance, it's best to maintain it, because I know some jurisdictions do have quantitative ordinances on this.
We did, a while ago, a question went out, some discussion went out on the CML List Board from the attorneys about these sorts of ordinances and the difficulties of enforcing the quantitative ones where officers would have to register with a specific decibel meter and be able to determine the locus of that as a particular vehicle. Also, it would fence out issues where the civilians report that, but the officers may not have heard or detected, or may not, when they roll up on it, may not have the equipment to, to gauge it. So if it's tied to a decibel meter in a specific level, it is tougher to enforce, was the, kind of the consensus that went around at the CML List Board. So part of that did factor into this discussion and/or to this proposal, some of the thinking that went into behind it.
So as a citizen, if, if I'm stopped at a stoplight, car pulls up alongside of me, and I can feel the vibrations and hear the sound coming from that vehicle, then I could report that to the police, and that would be investigated? And if I were willing to appear as a witness, then that could, that person could be charged with that and taken to municipal court?
I would, in that set of factual circumstances, it would be a witness and be subpoenaed come in court if the case went to a contested trial. Seeing, you know, the disadvantages to this, and there's actually a CML article that went around the latest, latest edition of that. There's a drawback to this approach, in that these broader sorts of ordinances lend themselves to void for vagueness and over, overbreadth challenges under the First Amendment, so where either a citizen has to guess at its meaning, or they're so broad that they capture certain constitutional, constitutional speech along with it. This is the example of a time, place, and manner restriction on speech, which is permissible under the First Amendment. And it's tailored enough, our particular ordinance is tailored enough in such a way that we use reasonableness twice. And I think that that's important in that, and also I think the prima facie evidentiary presumptions are important also in our scope of the statutory ordinance, to where we would overcome a void for vagueness challenge, most likely, because we've crafted it in such a way that people don't have to guess at its meaning, and it doesn't leave no discre, it leaves a fair amount of discretion for enforcement, but it doesn't leave unlimited discretion for enforcement. Two AM, if you're running a vehicle like that where it's shaking your windows and you can hear it inside your car, is much different than, say, two PM. Potentially, one person would be sighted, one person went on, so. But there is some drawbacks to having it away from a specific decibel level. But that was the analysis that went into this and the thinking.
One other thing I think is important to clarify is that by eliminating the tie to the speakers, it also would include things like mufflers, modified exhaust systems, and so on, that are also a noise generator, but that are speakers.
Yes, that's correct. That was the intent, actually. And also that we wouldn't have to guess that, oh, this is factory installed versus, or this came originally with the car versus this is an aftermarket. Officers in the field wouldn't have to guess at that or make that determination.
And that's me. I think Dave's clarification is really helpful to me. You kind of lost me in all the details, because then when I'm looking at the red line version, all we're changing is that we're, we're saying from speakers or anything else. And then we go on to say, anything else doesn't mean it wasn't originally installed with the vehicle. So you gave us a lot of information, and I was a little lost in all of that, but all we're doing is changing one thing, right?
It's a discreet change, yes. That's correct.
Okay, okay. Your description made it sound like you were like really doing something really different. And I just, again, personally, I got lost in the details. So we're really just looking at changing this, the sound can come from speakers or any other equipment.
That's it. That's the.
Yeah, but it just seems kind of onerous to me that the fact that if it was installed at the factory, now suddenly somebody's playing their radio a little loud as they're driving through town, or, or a stock muffler might be in somebody else's opinion, a little loud to go in and tie up the police force, go and pull them over, and, and it just seems to me like that one little sentence in there, originally installed on the vehicle, is just a little bit more than what I'd be willing to support. I could see if you take and add bigger speakers, those boom boxes in the back, and you're driving through town, and you're vibrating everybody's windows, I could understand that. But if it's a brand-new Jeep coming right off the factory that has authorized factory equipment on it, and then somebody says, oh, well, that seems kind of loud to me, it just doesn't seem to our residents. Now, if it's modified, then, you know, and they put some glass pack mufflers on it or something like that.
I would argue with that, Ed, that I think that the excuse that, oh, it came that way, well, if you know that it's too loud, you can modify it to a less, less noisy standard.
Yeah, but how do you know it's too loud unless you get it?
Well, it doesn't matter, though, to me, whether it's installed at the factory or subsequently installed, you can, you can overuse a factory installation as well as you can
Exactly.
overuse an aftermarket situation, so.
And if it's rattling windows, and you're inside a closed vehicle next to it, it does, I don't think it really matters where that came from. And I don't think we should give people that, oh, but it came with the factory, so I get a free pass.
Yeah, I don't think this is anything new. I can remember last century, if you were driving a vehicle with street pipe on it, it was $15 when you got cut.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not a whole lot different, really, and my engine was installed at the factory, and it'll, will go 120 miles an hour, but I'd best not be going 120 miles an hour.
Exactly.
I would add to this, too, to kind of, the discussion is, these have to be proven beyond reasonable doubt, whether it be plea, or whether it be by a, or whether it be by proof at contested trial. One of the things that all our officers are equipped with and they have to be equipped with is body camera. And I can tell from experience, from prosecuting the existing ordinance as it stands now, is that when they walk up to the vehicle, whatever it may be, it, that sort of audio and detection picks up how, how much the, the noise is coming off of that generally. And that's proof that can be used. So I think this, these ordinances are subject to a degree of officer discretion because the way they're crafting qualitative ordinances. But that said, we want our officers, expect officers to exercise that discretion properly. And ultimately, prosecutors will determine whether or not there's sufficient evidence to proceed forward with the case. So I hear your concerns. There are ways for originally installed equipment to be used in a time, place, manner setting that is unreasonable, that disturbs the peace of others. And when that occurs, I think the ordinance is crafted in such a way that an ordinary person wouldn't have to guess at its meaning, so.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, moving on. Next is proposed campaign finance ordinance for municipal elections, and I'll turn this over to our city attorney, Ben Morris, and our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try and get into the crest john again, see if it'll give me a code. Thank you. Okay, so in your packet, you'll have this thing I'm putting on the screen. I highlighted a couple of things on the version I'm putting on the screen, but the text should be the same. When last we spoke on this topic, you had asked for some changes to the ordinance that we originally brought to you. You had specifically wanted us to graft in the state's campaign finance requirements and not try to restate them all here. You did, however, want us to have our own regulations in regard to not limiting the funding, and then we had our own date schedule with the city clerk for when the reports were to be filed. So this pretty green highlighted language on the screen, and should be the same in your packet, is my attempt at that. I think Mr. Reed was trying to help us, too. We were all talking about, how do you graft in the state's requirements, including the Secretary of State's regulations, which are found in the CCNRs, and get it all put into our ordinance through this language? So that's what you have there. I added a new section B. It was an unintended consequence of this. I thought that, see, we wanted to have our own enforcement and hearing regulations, and I wanted to make sure that it was clear that violations of the state's regs, as they pertain to a city municipal election, would be handled under that complaint procedure that we put in here. So that's what B is intended to do. Another, maybe it was an intended consequence, but whether intended or not, some of the stuff that I had in here under, or in these crossed-out sections, was redundant and unnecessary because it's covered by the state's regs now, so we don't need to recreate the wheel in our own code. So I deleted all of that. I'll draw your attention to the yellow highlight. It's yellow on the screen, but not in your packet, just so you know. Language should read the same both places, though. The yellow highlighted language is my effort to graft in anything covered by the state's campaign finance regs, without having to restate that very extensive definitional language of what is a campaign committee, and who needs one, and what about issue committees, and what about recall committees? All that kind of stuff is intended to be covered by the yellow highlighted language without, again, reinventing the wheel that the state has in its regs.
It's yellow on there, but I can't read it. Is it underlined on ours, or what do we?
Yeah.
Ours is not highlighted.
It's not highlighted, yeah.
I understand.
Can you tell us exactly where that is?
Yeah, instead of keep calling it the yellow highlighting.
Uh, let me get into your packet, and I will. Pardon me while I do that.
Not that E, but that E? Okay.
Yeah, that E there.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be under D. Go past where I've, I've crossed everything out, and then you'll see D. That's the first place where we'll find what I'm talking about. It's the redlined or underlined language there.
Okay.
You'll see it again in E.
Okay.
And that's just straight out of your packet.
Okay.
So I'm just bringing it to your attention so you understand what I'm, what the intent of this is, and why I, why I said it that way.
I think it looks good.
You see something similar in F, if you just keep paging down. And then I didn't make a whole lot of other changes as I scanned through here. We did one thing with records retention. Lisa, do you want to talk about any of that, or have I said anything you disagree with?
Yes, I, I am requesting that we do extend the amount of time we were required to keep those reports from candidates to, pretty much similar to what we are expecting to keep the records for the successful candidates. It just falls more in line. I think they're important documents, and I think the state did also, and they extended those retention requirements.
I'm seeing some heads nodding. Are you all okay with what we did?
Yeah, so, and I want to back up to the bigger picture. The reason we're doing this is because the state legislature recently, last session, passed a law putting campaign financing limits on municipal elections. And we said, hey, we're a home-rule city, and we can make an ordinance for our city that we believe works for us. And council agreed that the way we have been doing things forever, which was no campaign limits, worked for us, and we didn't want to be subject to the new state law. And so thus, this ordinance has come about for that reason. And we took that opportunity, our city clerk pointed out, hey, we could also do a better job of specifically laying out how we keep our records, and what the process would look like if a citizen wanted to file a complaint about campaign finance and the paperwork that candidates or issues committees file. Because we are subject to state laws, however, candidates in the city of Montrose don't file their paperwork with the Secretary of State, they file them at the local level with the city clerk. And so all the rules apply, but there was no procedure for complaints. So we took the opportunity to also include that in this ordinance that updates and defines how we run our municipal elections. I think that context is important, why we're creating this law.
So there's really no substantive change to the way that our system has operated for decades. What we're doing is codifying and clarifying that, putting that into a document that we can hold up to the state and say that as a home-rule city, we can take care of our own elections.
Yep. That's an excellent way to wrap up. I like so. And why does it matter? Perfect. Any questions for our attorneys on this, or why we're doing it, or for Lisa?
I think it looks good. It's very clear and very evident what you're trying to do. It makes it very streamlined, very readable as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to see this on your next meeting agenda, or is?
Yeah, I think we can put it on with council.
Okay.
Vote, make it official.
That's what we'll do.
I mean, you say, are you talking about tomorrow night, or?
No, no.
No, in two weeks.
It would be the next cycle, right?
Correct, thank you. Wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Okay, next up, Lisa, I'm still with the mic in front of you for our 2024 city council meeting calendar. What a great opportunity to look ahead and plan around holidays and election cycles and make sure we're all on the same page.
Exactly, especially since the first, three of the first four work sessions conflict with holiday Mondays. So I can pull up a calendar if you would find it helpful. Otherwise, the calendar and the, the dates in question are in the meeting packet.
We all good on following along with the meeting packet?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay, there are several Monday holidays, and our protocol has been that if there's a Monday holiday, we just move the work session to the following Tuesday, which is essentially the same regular meeting, same time, same place, just a day later, to not conflict with the holiday. So that'll happen on January first for New Year's Day, January fifteenth for Martin Luther King Junior Day, and February nineteenth for President's Day. Then we're, we're kind of being clear on Monday holidays until September second, the Labor Day holiday conflicts, and October fourteenth is Indigenous Peoples' Day. The, if council wants to proceed in that direction, following that same protocol, we can keep going that way. Then the regular meeting conflicts, we have our municipal election, election day is April second. In the past, because we have certain council members who are candidates, and the clerk's office is actually pretty busy that day as well, that meeting has been rescheduled. Sometimes it's been scheduled to the Monday before, sometimes it's been held earlier in the day, just kind of whatever the council prefers. Or we can find a way to make it work by sticking to the regular schedule as well. And then the other conflict is the CML conference. It will be held on June eighteenth to twenty-first this year, and June eighteenth is the city council meeting date. And in the past, we have usually moved that council meeting to a Monday when it has conflicted. Just wanted to bring this all to your attention. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay.
I was going to say, we've got like maybe three separate decisions to make, so let's
kind of take them one at a time. And first off, let's talk about the, do we want to keep, if Monday is a holiday, do we want to keep moving the scheduled work session from Monday to 24 hours later and holding it on a Tuesday morning, the same day as what would be the city council meeting?
That would be my preference.
I think that's very effective and a reasonable use of time.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll continue the practice of rescheduling any Monday holiday work sessions 24 hours later to Tuesday. Okay. The next thing we'll talk about is what we should do about the, about the regularly scheduled city council meeting that would fall on Tuesday, April second, which is an election, which is a municipal election night. And our choices are moving it, cancel And our choices are moving it, canceling it. And did you want, is that the one you wanted to comment on?
No, I.
Okay, okay.
I want to be really clear, we're not voting on this.
No.
We're just discussing a kind of a consensus model of.
Give direction.
Giving direction to staff on a way to follow. And since it's not a legislative item, that we are not in violation of any kind of meeting by voting on it by all agreeing to do this.
Yeah, when we talk about calendar issues, we can talk about them like this.
Just to be clear, though, if you do schedule a regularly scheduled meeting, you do have to make a motion at a previous meeting. So we would put this on a future agenda.
Yes, we will vote on that part, but this discussion falls in a way that we're allowed to talk about dates like this. Anyone have a preference? Should we move that Tuesday election to April 1st, 24 hours before it would normally be held? Anyone have an objection to that?
No, I don't have a strong feeling.
I don't have an objection.
Okay, so let's move that meeting 24 hours earlier. And then lastly, the city council meeting that would be held. So just for your refreshing on dates, the CML conference will be held in June and it will run Tuesday through Friday. Maybe we need some clarification about, because it's going to be, I think, all the way over in.
Loveland.
Loveland. And so when we say it starts on the 18th, does that mean it starts at 1 on the 18th? In which case, sometimes people will want to leave on Monday. So rescheduling the meeting to Monday, the 17th doesn't necessarily help? Or does that mean it starts on the morning of the 19th? I'm afraid it starts like noon on the 18th.
Yeah, I would prefer moving our meetings to the 24th and 25th, the following week, because travel is going to be, to Loveland is quite a bit of a drive. And I want to make sure we have enough time to get there. And like you say, if it's happening at noon, we can't leave in the morning and expect to reasonably get there on time. So leaving Monday would make much more sense to me.
So what also, I think in the past, we have sometimes canceled city council meetings when we are going to be spending three, four days in a conference talking about city events anyway, with the possibility always of scheduling special meetings should there be items that need to be addressed by staff. So that would be another possibility would be canceling the second meeting in June.
You know, I think as we get closer to the date, we'll have a better understanding of what our needs might be at that point in time. So how much time, Lisa, do we need to have our notification out there for going to cancel a meeting?
You would have to make a motion at a previous meeting, so we would need to know by early June.
So that would give us a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I think that makes more sense because if we tentatively reschedule for the 24th and 25th and then find that we don't have any pressing items that require our immediate attention on those meetings, we could just cancel.
So I know Lisa would like to put together a plan, so to speak. You guys will have the flexibility to cancel or reschedule with two weeks' notice. But we know for sure we're not going to have a meeting on June 18th. It's not, you aren't going to be here. So that will mean what happened? Do you guys want her plan to include a meeting or do you want her plan to include a meeting on the 25th?
Personally, I think that in order for her to complete her calendar, it would make sense for us to move it to the following week on the calendar, understanding that we may well cancel if there's no pressing business.
I agree.
Okay.
And I think that by putting a meeting on there, it gives citizens opportunity to know and plan in advance that if they have an issue that they want to report to council, that we would tentatively have that meeting scheduled already for the 24th, 25th.
Do you guys want, so you also want to move the work session, move them together as a pair from the 17, 18 to the 24, 25?
Correct.
Okay, does that help with the calendar?
Yes, that helps, thank you.
And then the only other calendar update is staff meant to look at dates also as what our personnel have. And Wednesday, June 19th will be a holiday going forward as of the 19th, which is in line with the state and federal holidays. Okay. Thank you very much. Right, that accurately reflects, okay. Okay, any general city council discussion this morning?
Well, yes, I would.
Okay.
I'd like to see us on a future work session, put an item on there to discuss lodging tax. I'd like to have some idea of what other communities in the area are doing for lodging tax versus what Montrose is doing. It appears ours is quite low. And if we were to make a determination that we need to increase that, then we would have to do it in a time where we could get it on the next election cycle.
So when council wants staff to spend time researching an issue and bring back as a work session item, we would want to see at least three counselors supportive of that idea. You look really grumpy, sorry. So, fair enough. So I think perhaps we'll do, so it's not to put everyone on the spot. Council member Glassbell has said he'd like that to be an agenda item going forward. I think that if you are in favor of that being an agenda item, why don't you talk to him? And if he can show three council members who also want to see that, then staff will spend time and energy putting together a work session presentation about lodging tax.
I have no objection to having it as a work session. I'm getting better information on it because it's going to benefit us in the long run because we'll be able to explain to our citizens what it is, why it is where it is, and that'll give us time to discuss whether or not it's a viable option to revisit. So I have no objection to putting on a work session.
Okay, so now it's two?
I have no objection to putting it on as a topic for a work session. I would object to sending any kind of message that we are intending to act on it forthwith at this next election. So I don't want us, by scheduling it for the public, to presume, oh, my gosh, council, there they go again with other tax. I don't want to do that.
Okay, so it sounds like there's at least three council members in favor of staff putting together some, a presentation about where our current sales tax is. Wait, I'm sorry. So this, so I'm going to put something forward and then you guys tell me if this isn't what we want staff to do. We would like staff to make a presentation of work session that simply says where our current lodging tax is, how much revenue we get from that each year, and what some neighboring communities that we compare us, some neighboring communities. I think it's more relevant what neighboring communities are doing than what, for example, the city of Golden is doing. We have some comparable cities we use for some things. But in this case, we would be interested in what lodging taxes are in Telluride, Urea, Ridgeway, Delta, Grand Junction, Venison?
As well as what it can specifically be used for.
Okay.
You know, because I know we contribute to kitchen funds and facades and that sort of stuff. And if the purpose of all that stuff is to bring in, say, out people from out of town to visit Montrose and spend their money here, then if we're sitting there using that money specifically for those type of improvements, then it doesn't seem to me like it's not a tax per se on the community itself, but yet.
You want to know, and I think you want to know how the city of Montrose could use it, but I think that also is really relevant, how other cities are using it. For example, when Grand Junction recently doubled, they specifically told their voters it would be used for airline expansion. So not only what other municipalities have for their lodging tax, but is it dedicated to a specific purpose?
I agree.
So is that what, is that what council wants staff to come to us at a future work session with that information?
Yes.
Awesome. I think this was a really neat process to see what sometimes happens behind the scenes of ideas that council has. Because we all have lots of ideas and we've kind of run on a system of, hey, more than one of you has to have an idea before staff is going to spend time and resources investigating your idea. And so I think if the public is watching, this is a really good example of how if a majority of council wants someone's idea fleshed out, this is what that looks like.
And that one counselor doesn't just, can't just ramrod something through.
Yeah, or just say that staff go and research all of this and then I want to, yeah.
Yeah, and just to reemphasize that council discussion of an issue doesn't necessarily mean action by the council on that issue.
Yes, very good clarification.
We want to know more of what that could look like. And also perhaps would it be helpful to know our city clerk's input on this item? When we, if we wanted to act on it, when we are allowed to do it? The difference between a municipal election and what it would look like to put a city tax increase on a coordinated election in November and what it would look like to run a special election? Would that information also be helpful to council?
I think it'd be very helpful.
I think for a cost standpoint, it'd also kind of let the community know what we're looking for.
Okay, so in addition to wanting the information about the lodging tax, we want to know what our options would be going forward legally. I think we know, we've already done one wishes, which is we know we have to go to voters with a tax increase. So you guys can, legal department, you can tell us that, but I think we already all know that. So we're going straight to what that would look like from our.
Costs and timing.
Okay, that makes, and I don't think we should piling on more. So like if I go home today and think, oh, I also want to know these five things, I don't think one council member can go to our clerk or our attorney or our finance director and say, oh, also I thought of these other things add on. Because I think we've fleshed out what we're looking for.
I agree, but I would also say that our staff has been incredibly responsive to individual questions and utilizing the expertise and knowledge of our staff has been a huge benefit to me myself and as well as other counselors. So with that caveat, you know, we're not going to add this on a work session, but staff has been amazing. I mean, last three and a half years for me has been amazing because if I have a question, I know I can go to any staff member and they will help me learn the things that I need to know.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we've kind of agreed on the scope of what we're asking staff to present at the next work session.
Give them a framework.
And that no one council member can change that scope. We can ask questions, but like I wouldn't go and say, now tell me if we built five new hotels, now read you all the math for me on that. You're laughing, but you know, okay.
I'll share what I wrote down, what our current, these are the things you're looking for at this upcoming presentation. You'd like to know what our current lodging tax is, the rate, how much money we get each year from that lodging tax. So we'll share from a few previous years. What neighboring regional, neighboring and regional communities are doing for lodging taxes? What specifically lodging tax can be used for? What other communities are using lodging tax for? Some other municipalities have recently pursued lodging tax increases with specific purposes, such as funding airline guarantees or funding affordable housing. And then the election schedules and costs, including timelines for this to go on an upcoming April election or a future April election or a November general election.
And maybe just as, I'm not sure this is in an addition, but an expansion of what can those funds be used for? Maybe a recap of how we have used those funds, say, over the last five years.
That's what I was going to suggest, what are we currently using the funds for?
So how the city has used lodging tax funds over the last five years? Some examples of what we funded.
I don't think they're dedicated. I think they go into our general fund. No, they don't.
Notice that, right?
I think that's exactly what.
That's exactly what we want to know.
We have an expert shaking her head.
Yep, they're separate and we can share with you, we've used them.
And we, I'm sure, will have lots of good questions as we'll follow up from that presentation. But I think we've defined the scope of that presentation. So what we think we're going to hear about is we're all on the same page.
Yes.
Oscar Finance Director, is there any clarity that you need from this either? Okay.
That was way more helpful than just come tell us about lodging tax, wasn't it? Good. Okay, awesome.
And I'd kind of, my thought is, on the same note of our staff being helpful, at a recent URA meeting, city manager Bill Bell, deputy city manager Ann Morgan Taylor, and our city engineer Scott Murphy did such an excellent job of explaining what we do, why we do it, how we do it. And I think that the level of calm and professionalism exhibited by our staff is incredible and noteworthy. And I obviously can't speak for the entire council, but I have been very, very impressed with that level of professionalism and thoroughness and dedication to this job. And I just want to give you big kudos for the hard work that you guys all do. All of our staff does. I mean, you are all exemplary in this job. We are recognized all across the state of Colorado as one of the most cohesive teams and the model for how the city government should work. And I think 99% of that is because of our staff. So thank you for all the hard work you all do.
Thank you. Other council items for discussion today's work session? Okay, any comments from staff for our work session? Okay, then our work session is over.